Public presentations. City manager, is there, are there any email public presentations?
So Mayor Garndes, in our process of updating the public comment process with the city, we've changed the format a little bit. So the city clerk would read out if we've received any public comments. So I'll go ahead and refer to the city clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, your honor, we did receive one public comment prior to the meeting, which I will now read for the record. And it begins as such. Presidential candidate Andrew Yang brought forward the idea of universal basic income. He was chastised and attacked mercilessly. Shame on all of you who criticized Andrew Yang and the Yang Gang. Did you hear me? Shame on all of you. Riedel should institute a universal basic income starting tomorrow. Stockton has instituted universal basic income with beneficial results. Thank you, Stockton, for leading the way. Now it is time for Riedel to lead the North Coast. Riedel should be the first city to open a public city-owned bank and begin universal income. Two thousand a month would be a start. This would allow for us to support many of the local businesses. What good is a local business if nobody pays for anything? With universal basic income, first advocated for by Andrew Yang, we can save this community. This virus requires us to think outside of the box. Thank you for your time. And it was signed Gator on Davis Street. And that's the only public comment that we received.
Thank you. I mean, no further public comments. Move on to the consent calendar. Your motion to approve the consent calendar, would anyone like to pull anything from the consent calendar?
No.
Councilmember Strawn, Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Thank you. Is there a motion then to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second by Johnson.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. We move on to the report from staff, city manager staff update.
Thank you, Mayor Garndes and members of the council. The staff update begins on page seventeen of your package. Obviously, staff has been working on the implementation and expansion of the Zoom meetings. We're definitely interested in hearing your feedback in terms of how this is working or not working. We're kind of learning how to do this as we, as we move along. We did encounter an error in the, in the submission process for public comments. So email addresses out there refer to the correct address and half of them refer to an address with an S at the end of it. We did correct that and we actually added the, the incorrect email address as a city email address. So public comments sent to either the plural or singular public comment email address will still get to the council or still get to the public address system. We also have issued the letters to the state regarding the municipal debt forbearance for water and wastewater debt. We are working currently with an agent at the, at the Water Board on that particular issue. They're asking a lot of questions and looking at some of the city's audits and whatnot. So we're working with them closely on that. The, the city has also been working with the Chamber of Commerce and the Riedel Community Resource Center on the Riedel Volunteer Corps. In total, to date, we've actually shipped thirty-six food packets to elderly or disabled residents. Again, residents interested or needing this type of assistance can call City Hall at seven oh seven, seven six four, three five, three two. In addition, we have more, currently more volunteers than we know what to do with. We have over twenty volunteers signed up. And we're going to try to figure out how we can work with the group tomorrow with the food bank as they distribute live produce or fresh produce, excuse me, from the, from the fire hall tomorrow. We have issued now two pandemic newsletters through the Every Door Direct Mailer plus the Postcard Advisory on the Flushable Wipes, which was also sent Every Door Direct Mailer. And we have been working on our asphalt maintenance bid for 2020, which we'll talk about a little bit later in this meeting. And then we held the special meeting on March twenty-seventh of 2020, which was also kind of our first Zoom council meeting. And then we've held, and this is one that is going to become more and more important over time, which is a discussion on economic development and retention strategies for the city in terms of how, you know, the city can best recover, the businesses in the community can best recover from, from this disaster. So I don't know if Kevin Caldwell has joined on the line. Has Kevin joined on the line? Other than that, I was gonna see if Kevin could give us an update on the Humboldt-Riedel Business Park. We do have some, some interesting news to report on that, but we'll wait for the next council meeting. And then I will return it back to the mayor to see if there's any questions of staff.
Thank you, city manager. Are there any questions of staff? Council?
Yes, I have one.
Go ahead, Councilmember Wilson.
On the police reports, do we, I see that several of the cases, first of all, is three fifty-five Center Street the, the Blox? Location?
That's correct. It is.
Okay. I thank you for adding that to the list. What, what does, on the left side, the, I see you have the, it looks like the code, what does FU stand for on the second one?
Stands for follow-up. And I, I don't know exactly what that was off the top of my head.
The other ones are disturbing the peace, as far as four fifteens?
Four fifteen is disturbing the peace. I believe there was an unwanted subject there at one time. I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry.
Yes, that's not a problem. So it hasn't been as bad as it was, it seems like it was reported to me that someone had brought it to my attention. It doesn't look like it's as bad as they said.
There are some people there who are having, as could be expected, a harder time dealing with other people because they haven't had that experience in a while, especially in very close proximity. But for the most part, it is going very smoothly.
Thank you. Do we routinely go to other jurisdictions? I see in some of the other breakdowns, out of Riedel, something to Fortuna and we were
Fortuna.
No, we do not routinely do that. The search warrant we served in Fortuna was related to a sex trafficking case. The victim lived in Riedel, reported it to us. And because of the nature of the case, rather than having her repeat the whole statement over again to somebody else, we took the case on, which, with assistance from Fortuna and from the Sheriff's Department and the DA's office.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to ask a question of staff? Councilmember Johnson, no?
Yes, well, I have a comment. I want to commend the city staff and for the latest newsletter and also you, Mayor Garndes, for a well-written letter addressing the concerns to the community.
Thank you. The staff has been doing a really good job for sure. Okay, now we will leave the consent calendar and, I mean, I'm sorry, the staff communications and move on to special call items, community affairs. Item one, discussion on the 2020 asphalt maintenance project, page twenty-one.
Thank you, Mayor Garndes, members of the council. The, the item begins on page twenty-one. There's also, if you move back down your packet to page thirty, there's also some visual images of the, of part of the proposed project. So in, in a perfect world, we would be meeting today to discuss both the asphalt project and also the slurry seal project. There have been some delays in terms of bringing this material forward to the council for final approval for obvious reasons, but we should be able to bring all of this material to the council for approval on April twenty-first. So specifically for the 2020 asphalt maintenance project, the council may recall that that we went ahead and issued a bid for basically a project just off of the ATP project location. So as the council may recall, we are about to begin the ATP project, which will modify the intersection at Wildwood Avenue on US one oh one. So this project is immediately adjacent to it. It is, however, funded separately from the ATP project. We did break it into three phases after consulting with some engineers on the project to try to kind of, you know, get a good breakdown of how we could segment the project reasonably. I have good news preliminarily based upon the bids that we have received back and also the results from the slurry seal bidding that Fortuna was the head of for this year. It potentially looks like we can get all of the, this project and also all of the slurry seal project in with existing funding with some minor budget adjustments, all in the, in the streets fund. That it looks like it would not lower the fund balance in the streets fund. So that's very good news. What we're looking for, if there's any input on what the council's interested in, in pursuing, we can't obviously take it back out to bid without creating a huge delay. But we're interested in seeing if the council wants to pursue the full project. And then we'll, we'll obviously, on the twenty-first, we'll bring back kind of a series of of options for the council to choose from, whether to do phase one or all of the additional two additive items or to cancel this particular project. The slurry seal, the city has made a commitment to the, to the city of Fortuna that we would be, you know, following through on that particular project. A significant amount of funding was budgeted that, for that particular project. And it's all going to appear, it all appears to be within budget for that particular project. So we got very good bid results back on both the slurry seal and then also this asphalt project. So the plan right now is to bring back the final adjustments and back to the council on April, on April twenty-first. So we're happy to try to answer any questions that the council has. We're also available outside of the council meeting to try to answer questions on the project.
Thank you. Is this going to be delayed until, during the, the coronavirus lockdown situation? Or is this going to happen regardless?
Mayor Garndes, so as, as far as I know, the municipal projects are, are considered essential. So working on a public works project, you would be considered an essential worker. So it does not appear at this time that the project is going to be delayed for that reason. One of the other potential issues regarding the slurry seal would be our allied agencies and whether or not they're going to pursue the project. It was originally a, a regional effort, multiple cities involved. And so, and that's what the contractor bid on. Obviously, with the coronavirus, the, some of our neighboring cities may be reconsidering their financial commitment or maybe unable to, to make that commitment. For Riedel, that's not a concern. The city does have significant reserves and this project has already been financed through the budget. So basically, we're ready to go. I, I believe most of the other cities are going to be also in a position to be able to, in the county, be able to push this project through.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
I just have a comment. I know out of the area, if the, are the people doing this, the slurry seal, slurry seal coming from out of the county?
Yes, yeah. And I can get you the information on who bid for that.
That's not my biggest concern as it is. I know that on some other stuff that, when we were working, doing stuff across the river, contractors that were coming in wrote us and told us they weren't going to come in till this was, leaving their local jurisdictions until a, this thing was brought to an end for their own, for everybody's safety. So that may put a delay on the story seal.
Yeah. And actually, all of these, all of the bidders, I'm looking at the bidding list, I believe all of them are from out of the area. Most of them are in the Redding, Bedford kind of area.
Very good. Very good. I'm surprised that the construction site came in as low as it did. So that's encouraging on the furnace yellow.
I agree.
I'm not, and I'm not sure if, I know that the county has shut down all hotels, everything from people out of the area unless they're considered essential. So I don't know actually how that'll work, if the county will consider them essential. But that would be a lot of back and forth thing if, if the county doesn't consider that. That, that's just something, because I know that they have shut down the hotels to outside of the area.
That's for, that's for the story seal, but the other two are local, I believe, aren't they? Mercer Frasier and that Hoover are, those are both local
Right.
companies.
And we'll, we'll certainly be looking and working with Fortuna as they move forward on the slurry seal project. And obviously, if we can't get the workers here, then, you know, we'll have to delay the project. But I don't, I don't, at this point in time, I haven't encountered information that says that the project cannot move forward.
Thank you. Is Councilmember Strawn or Councilmember Johnson, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Mayor Garndes, this is Councilmember Johnson. I, I have a couple of comments regarding the street asphalt maintenance. The bids by Hooven, which is a local contractor from McKinleyville, if we did not adopt all three portions of this bid, we would never see low bids like additive items two and three ever again. These are extremely reasonable bids. And also, I would like to add that when, a year and a half ago, when we went out to convince the citizens that measure J was, was a good thing for them, we told them that we would be using it for three things, economic development, police and streets. And I, I think it would be very appropriate if we fulfilled our part of the bargain and underwrote the full contract with Hooven. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I agree with Councilmember Johnson. This, it seems like they've been very reasonable and it's, and I agree, we should do the whole, the whole piece there.
Thank you. Is this an action item? No.
No, we're certainly, we'll take the council's input into consideration. And then in two weeks from now, we'll be bringing this item back for formal adoption and to, to move the process forward.
Thank you. We will move on to discussion of utility late charges and shut offs. City manager, am I supposed to just start?
If you, if you want to go for it, or, or staff can start.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay. So this item is being brought forward to the council at the request of the mayor. We, we don't have a whole lot of attachments, obviously, to the agenda item. So on page, page thirty-five, you'll see the executive order from the governor of California stating the state's position on water shut offs, which are currently prohibited. So that question is resolved at the, at the moment. Regarding the potential waiver of fees, that is something that the council can do. But it may, may not necessarily be appropriate at this particular point in time. And I did ask for the city attorney to be on the line and also our interim finance director as well. But the, the, the gist of that is that under SB nine nine eight, so that was, SB nine nine eight was the recent legislation that, you know, created these payment plans for, for folks who are in arrears on their bills. The council's been working on adopting some legislation to get the city in compliance with SB nine nine eight. Under this new law, there is an ability for the city once a late charge has been, has been charged and the customer does not pay and then they want to do a payment plan, there is the option there for the city to waive the late charges. And so that might be a more appropriate time for the council to weigh in and authorize the city manager to go ahead and waive those late fees. So that wouldn't start until May because with SB nine nine eight, this upcoming billing cycle is the first one where, where the grace period has been extended. So there won't be any shut offs regardless of this coming billing cycle. But it's the next one that we would start to come up with these payment plans for people that could be implemented. And if the council gives direction down the road after you've seen the impact of the economic impacts and the, the situation with the billing cycle, then that might be an appropriate time to go ahead and, and waive those late fees. I'll go ahead and ask the city attorney to waive it and fill in any of the details on that.
Thank you. Yeah, in terms of the actual waiver of the late fee issue, we knew, need to caution with respect to that. All fees in both the water and wastewater funds are actually dedicated in for, as our collateral for financing for the respective projects for each system. And so each instrument has really specific debt covenants that restrict our ability to go ahead and voluntarily waive fees. So we want to do that in conjunction with the Water Board, the communication with them. And as Kyle noted, we've already written to the Water Board, engaged them in potential relief forbearance during the COVID nineteen period for both water and wastewater fees to try and keep the city's options open. But I think it's in the city's best interest rather than do policy a waiver at this point. Go ahead and account for those fees, have, as they regularly accrue in each respective accounting system. And then explore what option we have brought those fees, hopefully at conclusion of the COVID nineteen period on a customer per customer basis to the individual need. It'd probably be a hardship basis for, financial hardship basis, the council would want to impose for any actual waiver considered.
Thank you. There was a little bit of in and out there on, on what you're saying. But I think I got the gist of it, that, does anyone else need to ask Russ a question about what he just said?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Russ, on the, I understand the part that we have covenants that apply to our, our debt. If that, you're breaking up there, but my concern is of, at this point with, where people are, they're applying for unemployment, they're, they're not getting that because that's, you know, number, how it will eventually come. But the late fee, as far as the late fee, the way I read the ordinance, those kind of, kind of stack up on each other too. If you get a late fee and you, and you don't pay your, you don't catch it up, then you're still getting charged an additional late fee. So once an individual gets behind, then it's kind of, there's no, until they can pay the whole thing off, which could be a hardship, whether we set that up on a like the payment plan that Kyle was mentioning. I, because I would like to see it that it's not somebody just inadvertently trying to use the late fee as a reason to not use it. They would need to probably sign a little waiver, a little statement or paper or submit it with their bill that says, I'm, I'm late because of the coronavirus and I'm, you know, I'm laid off and it's, and it's created a hardship for me to in, in when possibly we got recovered from the state, but we'd also make the state happy with our, with whatever our covenants are. So I know there's legal questions, but that, that's kind of the gist of where I see trying to do whatever we can to relieve the pressure on the citizens in the short term. And this, as this isn't going to go forever. It's not going to break the city's water sewer. We're going to be concerned with other stuff. So if there's any way to make that work, there must be someone.
Yeah, Frank, you were cutting out just a little bit there as well, but I think I heard that grab them into your question. And then there are actually multiple protections available for your ratepayers right now. First and foremost is the actual moratorium on any shut offs that, that is in place and existence by the court or the governor's order and decree. So that's principal protection number one. But then, yeah, in terms of adopting some policy for ratepayers that come into arrears during this time period, you do have a lot of flexibility in that. And in fact, the new state law actually requires you to engage in this financial hardship and assessment on an individual ratepayer basis to provide them a payment plan opportunity. That was in state law before COVID nineteen. That's what the city's been getting geared up to implement. So you do have a lot of protections and we're treating it as somewhat of an urgency issue. Like tonight's discussion isn't the end of it. And we've actually kicked off or already engaged in the communication with the Water Board, the principal debt covenant holder for both water and wastewater. But we do want to communicate with them pretty carefully before we adopt any citywide policy that might include an actual waiver of fees. Again, that's a collateral source we've pledged to the state or our respective systems. So we don't want to violate our debt covenants and just unilaterally act kind of hastily without engaging them and opposing to them exactly what we do.
Sounds like you're following a procedure that needs to be followed.
Right. So, and when, if someone is, at this point, if someone is late, we have the ability then to, well, the, the law that is, that we're under now is of course just, just changed. So we would then, if I'm understanding correctly, have the ability to, So we would then, if I'm understanding correctly, have the ability to at some point in the future to address the waiver and even would we be, if they're late, if the payment's late, then anyway, then that would be the point at which we would discuss their late fee. And so at that point, that's when we would, if we were going to have a form or and that would of course come after the, we get the letter back from the state. But at that point, there would be some type of form or something that would indicate if it was COVID related, if it was just late because it was late, because we don't want that to happen either where we adopt a waiver fee and then you're just late and don't have to pay the waiver fee for the people who are late on a regular basis. It could get lost in there and we could waive fees unintentionally.
Understand.
So, so my understanding then is that we should allow the state to come back and answer us before we take, before we overreach and do something that goes against our covenant with the state.
Yes, that and then also we want to integrate whatever policy we adopt with the new Senate Bill nine nine eight policy that has a financial hardship and workout plan requirement built into the statute that we're anyway. And again, all the ratepayers have the protection right now of knowing there's a moratorium on utility.
Thank you.
The Senate Bill nine nine eight?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Councilmember Strong, Councilmember Johnson?
No, thank you, Russ.
No comment.
Thank you. Then is the my, my, am I getting the, I get the feeling that we have a consensus that we're going to allow the state to come back and answer us before we take any other action at this time. That's in my hearing.
Yes.
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay. Okay, then we will leave that. Move on to an update on the Corona, thank you, Russ, on the coronavirus. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garnes, members of the council. The, probably the biggest thing concerning the city going on right now are the potential deferrals in sales tax revenue and property tax revenue to provide relief to Californians. So some of these decisions that potentially dramatically impact local government. And so we're continuing to watch that impact. I would say though, that overall the city's in a very good, you know, financial position in terms of reserves and our ability to weather the initial storm. The scope of this and the length and breadth of this crisis, though, is truly unprecedented. So in the long term, I think, you know, there are potentially some questions, but but in the short term, a deferral on certain revenues is something that the city can initially handle and deal with. But so far, the other actions that the city has taken have included things simply like the installation of hand sanitizer stations, enhanced cleaning, restriction of access to the corporation yard, implementation of at home work for some of the city employees. The council's updated the continuity of government plan. We've updated the council chambers when we do have meetings in person, which are now becoming very, very infrequent to allow for social distancing. We have canceled the League of California Cities meeting along with the league that we were going to hold about two weeks ago here in Riedel. There was the implementation of new teleconferencing capabilities, the attendance of various conference calls on COVID nineteen. Just about every day, at least, there's one kind of reoccurring conference call that occurs. And that reminds me that if the council is interested, individual council members are interested in attending, there is a meeting on Tuesdays and Thursdays at two o'clock that council members are specifically invited to. And so I could provide you that login information where you would have direct access to Dr. Teresa Frankovich and Sheriff Hansel. They have asked that there be one point of contact for each entity. So Mayor Garnes is our point of contact. So I would encourage you, if you have specific questions, and it can be any kind of questions that you have to contact Mayor Garnes and have Mayor Garnes ask those questions for you. And then to tune into those meetings. So that's a great resource that they have provided to the cities. And I want to encourage the council members to take advantage of that. The city hall front counters have been closed, along with the police department have been closed to the public. We are doing our business through the phone. And fortunately, that is working out pretty well. So we have been able to adjust city operations to make that happen. We have also engaged in the educational efforts of the community. That's really probably the most important thing that the city can be doing. And we've done that through two separate sixteen page EDM, every door direct mailers, along with a postcard. We've done that through our LED signage on Wildwood Avenue and advising people. So I think we've done a pretty good job in terms of getting that information out there for the public. We probably will issue a third pandemic related newsletters, probably in about two weeks as we get more information on kind of the next phase of this situation. And overall, though, I, what I would encourage the council to do is refocus in on economic recovery for our business community. There's been a lot of work done over the past few years to try and bolster up the economy of the city. We want to figure out the best way to have the city rebound after this. This is going to be a major crisis for the business community. And we need every idea that people have to bring to bear for this situation to try to see if there's a way that we can provide assistance to the community. So probably our next newsletter will be really very specific to the, to business holders. We have been issuing correspondence directly to them. We have been talking with development groups in the county to figure out what options are available. And of course, the chamber's been a great help as well. The, and then finally also we did, you know, form and have been just using the Riedel volunteer corps. We've signed up over twenty volunteers. We've distributed quite a number of food items. We've done that in a safe manner. So the, we did talk with public health to get their blessing in terms of moving this project forward, making sure that people, folks are wearing gloves, we're distributing, we're assembling the packages, make sure there's a chain of custody where the packages are safe and then delivering them to those who need it. So again, if you know the folks, encourage them to contact city hall. You know, the current list that we have is fairly short. We have been able to encourage twelve persons sixty five or older who were not part of any other food assistance program in the city to reach out and help. But we know that there's more folks out there who need assistance. And the chamber, the Riedel Community Resource Center in the city are prepared to step in and help where possible. So I want to encourage the council to also be repeating that message, getting that out into the community. And with that, I'll return to the council if there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council member have a question for city manager? So I think, thank you, city manager. I
Mayor Garnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson here. I have a question for the city manager regarding the normal preparation of the 2021 budget. Normally, we would be in the business stage of doing, or staff would be in the business stage of preparing a budget. Has, while I was out of state, did the governor waive or delay that process?
No, he has not. Staff is now turning its attention towards, towards the budget process. Again, the big challenge here is going to be keeping normal business moving forward. I think, I think we can do that. Our budget is not completely complex. There is just a few adjustments that need to be made. The council's consideration. And so I think we're in a good position. Are what we've been able to do over the past is push forward the streets projects. So that's taken up a significant amount of staff time. And, but we're turning our attention towards the budget now.
Thank you.
And I would assume, just following up on that particular question, city manager, that we will be having some type of video meetings to discuss this as it moves forward.
Yeah, we should be able to adhere to the budget calendar.
All right. Does any, thank you, does anyone have any reports, communications? You're on mute. Councilmember Wilson. I guess he doesn't have anything. I have been on numerous halls as well. Practically every day, a White House, a White House call on Wednesday. County calls on Tuesdays and Thursdays. There's a new call, I can't even remember who it is now, but on Mondays, their weekly call. And also, oh, the Monday weekly call is through Region Two. For the, well, it's Region Two, it covers from Del Norte to Benito. And so the tribal leadership, elected leaders, the county, public healths are all in on this call. And, and it's actually, the counting one was pretty informative. The Tuesday and Thursday one has, is gotten pretty short unless there's actual questions. They give us an update of what our, the stats are in Humboldt and in the country, in the United States. And but then if you have any questions, then you ask them, if they can answer them, they will answer them. If they cannot, they will get back to us. And then last Thursday, we had a call with the St. Joseph's system. And we are very fortunate to have Roberta Luskin, I can't remember her last name in the, it's a Luskin dash. I can't remember the dash after the dash, but anyway, she's the administrator at St. for St. Joseph's and Redwood. And she worked in the past with Dr. Fauci. And she was instrumental back during the AIDS pan crisis. And was instrumental in clinical testing. And she's very, very up to speed and she knows, she knows what she's doing. And it actually, I think we're very, we're very lucky to have her here in Humboldt County. They are very forward thinking because she's been in situations that, there hasn't been a situation like this. But at the time the AIDS crisis happened, she was instrumental in it and in Chicago. And so she has a very good grasp on how to plan ahead, get things set up so that, like if we have a spike here, that they're as prepared as they can be because they can see it coming. And so that was a very good thing. One of the things that we were asked to do is from cities to do for essential workers and for businesses and just as citizens and for city leadership for city, like city hall, for example, I asked Kyle, after having this, if he could have a sign made thanking our essential workers, our grocers, thanking our hospital staff. What was said at this meeting was that a little goes a long way to show people appreciation. And if we could put signs in our windows, if we could just pass on some way that we can let the people who are out there working and putting their lives or their health online, on the line. If we can do anything to let them know that we appreciate it, that it would be great, really felt by them. And it would just show that kind of we're with them and, you know, we are supporting what they're doing and just thanking them. And so that's something that if you can push forward a message, if you can push forward to put a sign in a window to somehow do some display saying, thank you, that that would be good. If businesses on Main Street, they could put out thank you signs for essential workers because it is really, really important to keep them in a place where they want to keep doing what they're doing as risky as it is. And if there's anyone who is looking for some way, some way to donate that if you go to St. Joe's, St. Joe hum.org, you can there, there's also a link at St. Joe's website that you can go to and click on. It's a chat. So if you have questions or if you feel like you have symptoms, you can go right online. You can connect to someone, you can go over these things. And that's, that's an online tool that they've developed. And there, there's some oxygen thing, testing thing that they're coming up with, but I'm not really really clear on that, so I won't put that forward. But they are trying everything that they can do to make it better. For example, getting iPads for people who can't, they don't want people coming to the hospital now unless someone's dying or if someone's giving birth. But, and for people who are being isolated, they have iPads so that you can communicate, so they're not, so that they are not completely isolated, so that you can communicate. And they have purchased those iPads to give to patients so that they can communicate out. And that's a really, really good thing. The other thing is we have to remember the census, we can't forget that. That's a big thing that will affect everything as far as our, as far, as far as our budget, as far as what the state's, state will do for us. So we need to keep that out there too, in the forefront. And I think that that is all. I did a PSA Humboldt Strong, Humboldt Strong Message, Redwood News is, Redwood Strong Campaign. And they're getting different people and from around the county to do this like a sixty second thing that they're going to play on YouTube and on their news, newscasts. to do this like a sixty second thing that they're going to play on YouTube and on um, their news newscasts. Um, that, um, if you have any ideas for support for hospital staff or for any essential workers, if you could get into St. Joe's, they would, they would love, they're open to any kind of suggestion of support that we can put forward. See? There's been a lot, a lot, a lot of phone calls. It's crazy. Um, and there's a coronavirus dot providence dot org that also goes into the St. Joe's system. Um, if you are looking for any answers or um, if you have questions that you want to um, put forward. They also have just real quickly, they have changed their ICU. They've they've gone from twelve beds to thirty two beds. Um, and Redwood now has sixteen beds, eight surgical and eight pack you beds. Um, so they are really already trying, they've they've made their rooms into negative pressure rooms at St. Joe's, all the, all of their ICUs. Um, and they have emergency screening tents at St. Joe's at um, Redwood Memorial. The open door is doing testing and evaluations. And I think that is that is all in the moment. Um, they are asking that if you tell people, if we were put out there that people should wear face coverings of some sort, masks that what they don't want to happen is they don't want people to try, I don't know where they will find them anyway, but they don't want them to go and try and find N ninety fives or surgical masks because those need to be reserved for um, essential workers. So scarves or or just I I imagine dust masks or uh, if someone's making masks that you know of that you can uh, get a mask from, but whatever you do, don't go out and try and buy up N ninety fives or surgical masks because our essential personnel really need those. And so, um, but it is important that at this point, they have put out a cover your face uh, order in Humboldt County. And so when we go out, we are supposed to have some type of face cover uh, to not so much to protect ourselves, but to protect others is actually how they're they're framing it. So um, that is, that is all I think that I have from the the phone calls that I've been on um, relative to the the this area specifically. So um, I just wanted to put those things out there. Don't forget the signs. Don't forget the census. Don't forget your face masks. Okay, that's it. That's it for me.
I got unmuted here. Um, just gonna say that we have an HWMA meeting Thursday, this Thursday, and they're going to try to do the same format that we're doing here. So I think it's a relatively simple meeting. Staff authority to do things.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything else? I'm going to take that as a no. Is there a motion to um, close the meeting? I beg your pardon?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn. Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Everybody stay safe, stay healthy.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.